I call this meeting to order. Would you please join Councilmember Joanne Osborne in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation?
I welcome you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bow your heads, please. Father, my father, today we gather and give thanks and honor to one of our city's past mayors, Carl Gow. Thank you for lending our city your servants and may he rest in peace with you. This month is recognized for awareness of children fighting cancer. Lord, please heal this innocent young ones quickly and make them strong. We ask that you guide this council with wisdom and understanding to make the best decisions we can. And please protect our troops and our public safety and may they always be free from harm. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The mayor is out of town tonight, so I'll be running the meeting. Ask for a motion to excuse Mayor Lord.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilmember Stip, second from Councilmember Osborne. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Under Communications, we have three communication items tonight. First presented is from Judy Spiccanic, Volunteer Coordinator. Will recognize and adopt a street and adopt a park participants. Hi Judy.
Hi, how are you Joe?
I'm doing good.
I mean Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor Pizzillo, councilmembers, guests, it's my pleasure tonight to bring together and recognize our Adopt a Park and Adopt a Street participants. Our Adopt a Park program started probably about five years ago and our Adopt a Street just two years ago. But I thought that we have hundreds of people that participate in these programs and really make a difference in the community and I thought it proper that we actually bring them here tonight and can bring them forward and recognize them. I know Vice Mayor Pizzillo, we're going to ask you to come down here and then as I call up their names, we'll have a slide for each one. Evelyn Howell, who has worked closely with all of our groups, she's my number one person helping me as a volunteer with different programs that we have and she will be handing out the certificate. And PJ Miller, who is another star volunteer, is going to be taking the photo with the Vice Mayor Pizzillo. The first one that we'd like to recognize is, you can see here, we have all the difference. We have 12 parks that have been adopted and some are new to the program and some have been with us four or five years since we started. The first one, I don't believe that they are here tonight and if they are, please step forward. We have Girl Scouts troop 2636 and they have Bullard Wash. The second one we have is another Girl Scout troop. They've actually been with us for four years, the Cactus Patch. And it's funny because I pulled back this photo off that was probably three or four years and now they're a lot older, they're probably in high school, these girls that are in this picture. I do believe that we have Moms Club of Goodyear North, Nikki McCormick. Nikki? We, let's give them around. Vice Mayor, would you like to come down here? Yeah, well Nikki, you can have a photo taken with you. The Moms Club have been involved probably three years at least. It changes leadership all the time. I think Nikki just recently took over as the new person in charge. And what's great about it is that the moms figure they were looking, they were out at the park all the time with their kids and they were interested in doing this, so they come with their little kids and while the kids are playing in the park, they get a chance to clean and even the little kids get to help. Thank you Nikki. I don't leave, we have a rep here from Millennium High School, the IB program, but they took this over. Yay, okay, good. This is awesome, this is great, Millennium High School. I think Ryan, her brother, had the program last year and Anise decided that she was going to take this on as her responsibility this year, so thank you Anise, thank you. Belton Park is one of our more heavily used parks and so we do have a couple people that also work with that, so. We have the Cub Scout PAC 360 from, and they've been involved at least three years, out at Estrella Park. Those little Cub Scouts, cute. I just love, the one thing I love about the Adopt a Park is that we give an opportunity for the young kids to get involved in families. And I think that's the best thing of all, that you know, your teaching service to these young kids at a young age. Our newest, one of our new groups is Phi Theta Kappa and I know that they're here tonight. It's Freddie Kirker and his, a group with him?
Just Maryland.
And Maryland. We were laughing, I says Freddie's got it all right. He says his group came out, they cleaned the park and they have, then they had a chance to cool off in the water.
They picked a good one.
The Goodyear Community Park has four weekends and we try to do, at one time we did have all four weekends taken, but right now we just have two that are participating in this. The other one that we had last year was Refining Christian Church, also had the community park. At Loma Linda Park, which is just over there by St. John Vianney, we have the YMCA Westside Silver Fens that comes with the group. They make it as part of their practice. Kids come out, they work out and run around the park and maybe do some pushups and then they clean the park, so go back to the YMCA and have workout. This is, we've had Primrose School, it's just for our little tykes, the three and four-year-olds that are out there cleaning and this is their second year. We have, everybody re-ups their commitment, which is a one-year commitment, that they go out once a month in June. Southwest Community Network, I believe is here and it's Coach Mike. And they have Parque de Paz. And Coach Mike, I believe, part of your, and Coach Mike, is it, you planted a tree for who, it is, that passed, yeah, Irene Gary was part of, yeah. And so they had their group and they came out and cleaned the park and actually planted a tree in her honor. She passed away, was it in June?
Yes.
You're welcome, thank you. This is Pets, Pets Place has adopted Roscoe Dog Park, which is very appropriate. The pets cleaning up after that, so it's just great and they go out and help us that once a month. Verado High School has just taken on the responsibility of cleaning Wildflower North Park. Verado also is very active, along with all other high schools, that they help with Make a Difference Day and get involved with also volunteering at other projects. New, before we move on to our Adopt a Street, we have two other new groups that are going to be coming on. We have Divine Care, which will be adopting Rio Paseo. And then we also will be having Dejordad Edge High School, which will take on Wildflower South. We're going to be printing their signs and putting up and getting them involved. Our Adopt a Street is, this one is limited to adults, 18-year-olds, just because they're near streets and we don't want to have them worried about kids running into the streets and any danger to them. They are asked to go out four times a year and we've just had everybody sign up for that. Here's all the different street locations that we have that have been adopted. Pretty impressive and it keeps growing every year. When we announced this two years ago and we put it in the, in focus, we had, bam, four individuals came right away to us. It was Alan, Kate Krab and also Judy Tarkowski and Joanne Terry. And so they were like, we want to do this, it's great. So Alan and Kate could not be here tonight, but we do want to thank them very much for their, I mean, this is, they, it's a really busy area, if you're not familiar with that, it's getting close to the 303 that they go down, lots of trash in that area. And they go out, we ask them to go out four times a year, they're going out at least weekly, I mean monthly if not weekly. Jude Tarkowski, Judy Tarkowski and Joanne Terry, I know you can't tell them apart, that's because they're twins. Actually, they're triplets and it's hard enough to tell these two apart. But they have, they've adopted, they started with the Krabs and then they came and they said, oh, we want to do McDowell Road and then they said they were going to do the Rid Canal. And then they also do Virginia Avenue. I don't know, they, and you probably would see them, they go out with their little bags and they're on their bikes. They go on their bikes and they pick up all the garbage and they know everybody by name and Walgreens and they drop the trash over there and I can't tell you how many bags of trash that they've picked up or they'll call me and say, we've got, we found this tire. And so, you know, we get with the Parks Direct and do that, but they go out, I know, weekly and help us. I think we have Darren Farr is here with the Goodyear Engineering Department and they...
You have to recognize David Ramirez as well.
Well, I didn't know he was, David, I know you're going to be here, so David Ramirez, absolutely.
It's a very important part of this program.
Again, the engineering department, I love it, our employees actually giving back and they said, they jumped on this opportunity right away and say, we want to do part of this. They took the Wood Avenue, which is located by the ballpark. Thank you. The Rosenberg family, we actually have Jack, the father, and Jessica, the daughter, that adopted this. Could you guys come forward, the Rosenbergs?
Thank you, I really appreciate it, thank you. Appreciate you.
I mean, this is great, family time. I know Jessica travels a lot, so she makes time to, when she's home, to get together with her father to do this. Thank you. Pat Taylor lives out at Estrella and if you're not familiar, Estrella Parkway, it's from the riverbed to where the Star Tower is at, that's what he cleans. And this is a one man, he says it's Pat's pack. It's not Pat's pack, it's Pat. He's the pack. And so he cleans this all the time and he's another one, he'll call up, isn't it right, Evelyn? He'll say, he finds a tire.
Probably twice a week.
Yes. I have a tire, I have this, pick up this, two bags of garbage, four bags of garbage. So he's another one that is out there consistently. I just wanted to throw in here that last year we did get a grant from, isn't this the garbage people?
Waste management.
Thank you, waste management. Thank you. Waste management, which allowed us to buy more vests and more bags and gloves and grabbers and all kinds of things like that. So we are offered this to our people that are participating, which is, thank you to them very much. We have Jesse Mesa Memorial is the family for that, that takes care of this problem on Estrella Parkway. This is the one that's north of the bridge. And I believe we have David Herzog and he's with West Valley Cycle. David, if you could come forward. Thank you David. David has a big group, they go out riding on Saturdays and in between their 100-mile bike ride, they decide that they're going to stop and clean. I don't know how they find the energy, but we're glad you're sharing it with us. Palm Valley Church, this is not really a street, but it is an alleyway. Do we have any, oh yay, good. And it's, like I said, it's an alleyway and they've always wanted to have this cleaned. They go out, like I said, they go out every three months, yeah, every three months. They can literally get 50 bags of garbage. They trim the trees, it's amazing and we're really fortunate. Palm Valley Church is also very active in helping us with Make a Difference Day and very active in doing things here in the city of Goodyear. Everybody's fortunate, a lot of churches and schools that participate. Lockheed Martin, they just re-upped for their second year and I don't think we have anybody here from Lockheed Martin, but we're happy to have them. We have three new groups that have joined us this year. We have the Maricopa, used to have a certain section and they've transferred over streets that were in Goodyear, they've actually given to us. So those three, we have that 607th Air Control Squadron and they've agreed that they'd like to join and gave us their participation. We have Duncan Family Farms. I believe Duncan has two, Citrus Road and Cotton Lane, two sections that they've adopted. And then we have Lighthouse Fellowship, which on Perryville Road. That is, I just wanted to share with everybody, all of the different people that we have. I want to thank PJ Miller for taking my photos. And Evelyn Howell, you know, who is very instrumental in this. Thank you very much for your time.
Anybody like to make a comment? Start down here, anybody?
Well, I don't know whose idea it was, five years ago, was that yours Judy? To start this program, well, kudos to you and kudos to all of your participate because a clean city is so important to our image and what we are attempting to do, so thank you all very much.
I just want to add my thank you as well. It's really fun to do these street cleanups. I help clean streets with the Rotary, but we don't, I don't know what my assigned duty is, we just show up and you make a lot of new friends, but it really makes our city look wonderful and I certainly appreciate everyone cleaning our parks because they're such an integral part of the community. But thank you all and especially volunteering your time, we appreciate it.
Not much left to add, that was wonderful of our citizens and actually the diversity of ages from the little ones all the way up and I appreciate everyone making a difference because that's what our great community is about.
You know, every, it seems to be about this time of the year, we always talk about what great volunteers we have in the community and the number of hours that people put in in volunteering for us and it is, it is truly, truly a blessing for us as a community to have so many people that care and not only say that they care, but then show that they care about the community. And I think that's just, that's just incredible, so thank you everybody.
I just want to echo that, there's not a lot left to say, but thank you so much because it really does make a difference and when you drive up and down, when I drive up Estrella, it's just immaculate, so it just makes a Class A city and we got Class A volunteers, so thank you.
Again, I echo all that has been said and again, you're the reason what makes this a great community. Not only you talk, you do the walk, you step up and do it. So again, we all appreciate all that you do and again, thank you. Second up under Communications is a presentation from Darren Green. Provide us an update on the 9/11 memorial.
I'm here today with Craig Artrip, just representing the United Goodyear Firefighters Charities and just want to bring you up to speed on how our last couple events went, especially our 9/11, even though Mother Nature didn't cooperate. We got a little wet, being a former sailor, I decided it was good Navy weather and we were outstanding in it, so. Even with the rain, we still had 500, 600 people show up and the kids liked playing out in the liquid sunshine. We were able to raise $2,340 still. Total cost of the breakfast that we fronted was less than $350. We could not do this without our sponsors and the partners. This year was kind of unique, this was our first year really partnering with the city and we tried to step it up a notch. Like I said, unfortunately, the weather didn't cooperate, but the, all the different city departments really came together. I cannot say enough for the support we received throughout. Parks, facilities, police, GIS, communication, of course, the fire department. Our major sponsors for this event, over the last few years, have been pretty solid with us. They make this event happen for us, we couldn't do it without them. And that would be the Wigwam Resort, McLean's Distribution, Hickman's Eggs, The Village Inn, Hildreer's Orthodontics and Pediatric Dentistry, The Fries Marketplace, Safeway, Target, Costco, Grand Avenue Produce, Sugar and Spice Bakery, Albertson's, Desert Edge Wrestling Team, The Marley Sports Grill, Luke Air Force Base, Duncan Family Farms, Buckeye Fire Department, Halo, which is the helicopter that comes out, and of course, our CERT volunteers and the VIPs. This year, as always, we take whatever's left over, 100% of what we raise and the food that we provide for the event, whatever's not used goes right back to the community. We were able to donate a large donation to the New Life Women Shelter for all the leftover food. Also this year, we've done a lot of other events. We had the Wigwam Granite Mountain 19 Memorial, helping raise money for the fallen. That event raised approximately $8,000. And then we've done the, we partnered with Arizona Motor Trans for a car show, raising a couple hundred dollars for our local community. We went shopping with some of the homeless youth from the Goodyear Homeless Youth Connection. One of the things we like to do is kind of, for those that want to go back to school and, you know, get their education and kind of change where the position they're in, we take them shopping so they have everything they need for their, their school year. And then of course, our third annual charity golf tournament, which was very successful. We have a few upcoming events I'd like to bring to your attention and those are the Special Olympics. We've partnered with the Goodyear PD and their charities to kind of combine forces and help them out. We will be doing the Guns and Hoses softball tournament in November, fill a need and the Christmas at the New Life Shelter again this year in December. All these different events we do and all the fundraising we do, we're very conscious of trying to keep it local. And just to let you know where all the money goes, we've continued to support the New Life Women Shelter, the West Side Food Bank, JJ's Giant Heart, Sky Kids, Courage House and Arizona Burn Camp. We're also happy to announce, this year we're putting together a group to figure out how we can set up a scholarship fund for local kids. And it's really going to focus on not just academics, but serving the community will be one of the criteria for it. So hopefully I'll be able to come back soon and announce who wins that one. So we're hoping to have that in place by January. But that's where we're at right now and we're very appreciative of the support we've had from the council and the city over this last year.
Thank you. Any comments? Starting here to the right.
What can I say?
You're lost for words.
Yeah, I'm lost for words. I was expecting it to go the other way, sorry. You know, it, once again, we've got, you know, great employees in the city and looking to give back and I think we see that with, you know, the folks in engineering adopting a street, you know, our police, our fire, Public Works, Parks Department, you know, every, there's not a, honestly, there is not a week that doesn't go by that we don't hear about somebody, some organization, some department from the city that is stepping forward outside of their quote-unquote "expected" job duties to do something outstanding for the city, so keep up the good work.
First of all, I thought the rain was kind of nice because it held off the ceremony, at least it wasn't hot, so let's see, positive, that was great, except for our poor Vice Mayor, they got drenched on the way home. You guys do a great job, thank you for letting the community know and I think, I echo what Bill said, it's so nice that, you know, it's just not a nine to five and I think it's great that the community gets to see how great our employees are, that, you know, this is their home too and they really give back to their fellow citizens, so thank you and thank all your members.
Thank you.
I just can say outstanding and thank you. I think that every single charity that you mentioned is near and dear to so many of our hearts in this community and so I think it really shows the people that live here that what's important to them is important to you and that's what we're thankful about and a great job.
Well, I just wanted to thank the fire department for taking the opportunity to give us a chance to remember 9/11 and to come together as a city. It was such a moving ceremony and it was a wonderful day, even though it rained and we had a wonderful turnout. It was larger this year than it was last year. And I am especially gratified that you have these wonderful charities that you work for and provide for. Before I ever moved to Arizona, I served many years on the Pacific Burn Institute Board of Directors and I am very close to entities that raise money to better the lives of these burned children and I just want to thank you for doing that. I know how important it is to those who are affected and I just want to thank you and thank all of your members who work so hard every day to raise money and to raise the awareness. Thank you.
I too appreciated the day and although my chair doesn't particularly like getting wet, it was just an added feature and created a memorable morning. So thank you very much for providing us the opportunity to remember.
Again, keep up the good work. You keep outdoing yourselves each year, so again, thank you on behalf of the city, keep it up. Thanks guys.
Thank you Vice Mayor. Real quick, Vice Mayor, I just also forgot to mention, we were able to get support for our Honor Guard through Hildreer's Donal Group, made a substantial donation. Unfortunately, we've attended 24 funerals in the last about two and a half months and with this donation, we're going to be looking to up our game again and be able to really provide the best face that we can for all the events and we couldn't do it without the sponsors and your guys' support. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last presentation, Nathan Torres, Parks and Rec Director, who will introduce Goodyear's new Maricopa County Library Manager, is it Erin McFarlane?
McFarlane.
McFarlane, okay.
Vice Mayor, Mayor and Council, it's my pleasure to introduce Erin McFarlane as our new library branch manager for Maricopa County. Erin's career spans several library systems throughout the valley, Phoenix, Buckeye and of course, Maricopa County, most recently at the Litchfield Park Library. Over the years, Erin has provided diverse programming opportunities for patrons of all ages, abilities and interests. Erin is considered a leader in the library field and she really takes community, a community-based programming approach to the library, which results in the library being the hub of the community. And as you can imagine, this will be a great asset as we look to launch our new library here early next year. So with that, I'd like to introduce Erin McFarlane.
I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited as a citizen of Goodyear. I've been here for a while and we've all been very excited waiting for the new library, so it is my pleasure and my excitement to help open that new library and I just want to thank Nathan and his team for making me feel so welcome and getting us started and ready to go with our new venture, so I appreciate all the warm wishes, so thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? Start over here on the left.
Well, I was going to say my comments also when Nathan, not Nathan, I'm sorry, but when we did the library presentation, but we're delighted to welcome you Erin. I am a founding member of the Friends of the Library long before I was on council, so the library is very dear to our hearts and we have, the library was the number one goal of all the citizens of Goodyear, was that they wanted a library and they wanted it now and we're so excited to know we're going to get a larger one and we're looking forward to putting it together with you.
Welcome Erin. The library is such an integral part of a quality community and we certainly welcome you to help us build even more than what we have today. Thank you.
I have to tell you something Erin, it's really funny because, first of all, welcome to the city and, you know, even though you are a citizen of our city, welcome to, you know, as an employee to the city. But this past summer, I was at summer school at Harvard and of all the people that are chosen for this class, year after year after year, they always look for one librarian to be part of their ecosystem, they call, and so it just really, you are a very special person and you know what, I'm so glad that you're in our community, thank you.
Thank you, I'm glad to be here.
Welcome, that's pretty much all I can say.
And I'll echo that welcome as well, your enthusiasm is wonderful because we're just as enthusiastic and excited as you are. We're kind of a bit giddy up here for the library, I can pretty much tell you that.
Welcome.
Yeah, we're giddy over there too, so.
Well, keep that giddiness because we've been waiting for this for a long time, a lot of us up here are really looking for that, so welcome aboard.
Thank you very much.
Now it's time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda items. Any speaker cards?
Yes Vice Mayor, we have one. Lillian Bester.
Okay. Lillian, you want to come on up? Council, and this is according to state law, council will listen to comments and may take any of the following. Respond to criticism, request that staff investigate and report on the matter, request that the matter be scheduled for a future agenda item. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, the yellow light and a buzzer will come on there in front. You have 30- You have thirty seconds left to speak when that buzzer comes on or the yellow light. Before you begin, please list your name and address. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Lillian Bester, and I am the Principal of Bradley Academy of Excellence, and my address is 16060 West Lower Buckeye. We're just excited to be here, and we only stopped in to introduce ourselves and let you know that we are here and just, uh, really happy to be a part of the community. We have been working with some of the city, our first responders, and they have been great in helping us to establish our emergency response plan, and of course, we've had our injuries, you know, the fallout, the knees, including me, you know, the knee just gives out, so we have to call our, on our, uh, fire department. So we are really pleased and we're looking forward to strengthening the relationship that we've already, uh, started to establish. I'd like to say, um, Tim Newville has been just tremendous. He has been a meeting with us twice a month in helping us to make sure that we have all of the, everything we need in place, and our school resource officers and the City of Goodyear Police Department has been very supportive. I know that light is gonna go off in a minute, but we are, we have also extended the invitation to establish a hub in our school for our school resource officers and the City of Goodyear Police to call home so that we will have them on our campus, they will have a place to go in during the summertime out of the heat to complete their reports. So we're looking forward to establishing more relationships within the community, and we appreciate just being a part of such a wonderful community. I think we're fortunate because we have several of our teachers actually live in our school community, and you usually don't find that, you know? You find teachers driving across the city. We are proud to boast that we have all highly qualified teachers in our charter school, which is also something new. I'm coming from the traditional public school, and I always hear people say, "Public school, charter school." I said, "It is all public school. What do you mean?" You know? But we have raised the bar, and we now have, we can proudly boast that all of our teachers are certified, qualified, highly qualified, and we're working to improve the students in our school and in our local community. So we just wanted to say, we're happy to be here, we look forward to working with the officials and the community members in Goodyear, and I brought along two people for backup, you know, principals never go anywhere without backup, so I'd just like for them to stand so you could see. Couple of our teachers, I have a preschool who moved up, preschool teacher who moved up to kindergarten, and I have a third grade teacher. What's interesting, we've moved people here from out of state to Goodyear, so you actually know, I'm on the campaign, from Chicago to New York, we have recruited. When other school districts are closing schools, I'm calling.
Wonderful.
Come to Goodyear. So thank you for having us, and we look forward to working with you throughout the school year and in the future.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda items six point one through six point nine by title only?
Item six point one, approved draft minutes of a regular meeting held on August nineteenth, two thousand thirteen, and a regular meeting held on August twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen. Item six point two, approve the grant of aerial easement and agreement for a sixty-nine KV line across the access road at the Rainbow Valley wastewater and water facilities to Arizona Public Service and Arizona Corporation. Item six point three, approve the acceptance of the dedication of exclusive water line easements from NNP Three Estrella Ranch, Mountain Ranch LLC, a Delaware corporation, and NNP Three EMR Four LLC, a Delaware corporation, for placement of a water line from Cotton Lane to Site Thirteen Booster Pump Station. Item six point four, accept the dedication of an exclusive water and sewer line easement for the placement of water and sewer lines through Estrella Mountain Ranch Parcel Nine Point Six to Estrella Mountain Ranch Parcel Nine Point Five. Item six point five, accept the dedication of an eight-foot public utility easement by West Valley National Bank adjacent to the north side of Virginia Avenue east of Pebble Creek Parkway. Item six point six, adopt resolution thirteen dash one five six eight, authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona acting by and through its Department of Transportation to establish responsibility for funding, installation, and maintenance responsibilities of fiber optic conduit, conduit, cable, and traffic signal equipment along a portion of I-ten from Citrus Road to Perryville Road in the city of Goodyear. Item six point seven, adopt resolution thirteen dash one five six seven, authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona acting by and through its Department of Transportation to establish responsibility for funding, purchasing, installation, and maintenance responsibilities of fiber optic cable and equipment along Indian School Road from Cervel Avenue to one hundred and forty-fourth Avenue in the city of Goodyear. Item six point eight, adopt resolution thirteen dash one five six nine, authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Arizona acting by and through its Department of Transportation to establish responsibility for funding, purchasing, installation, and maintenance responsibilities of fiber optic conduit, cable, and equipment along McDowell Road from Cotton Lane to Pebble Creek Parkway, Cotton Lane intersections with Van Buren Street, the I-ten eastbound Frontage Road, and McDowell Road, and use existing state conduit along I-ten between Citrus Road and Cotton Lane in which to place fiber in the city of Goodyear. Item six point nine, adopt resolution thirteen dash one five seven two, acting under the authority of ARS nine dash nine fifty-four at seek providing for the appointment of Larry Ling as layperson for the Goodyear Volunteer and Reserve Firefighter Retirement Trust.
Does anybody from the public wish to remove an item from the agenda? Does anybody from the council wish to remove an item?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I have a question on six point seven, and if I could get it answered, I won't remove it off of, um, the consent.
Okay, can we get somebody to step up? Six point seven?
My question is, currently, right now, along one hundred and forty-fourth Avenue in Indian School to Cervel, we have digging going on right now, and I asked, uh, last week or the week before what that was, and they said they were getting, they were doing, they were laying some kind of a, a, I don't know if it was a cable or a conduit to get ready for the optic. So is this what's going to go into what they're now digging, and we're gonna tear it back up again whenever this goes through?
Vice Mayor Pizzillo, members of the council, uh, what is going on currently is there is a section of conduit that is missing along Indian School. It is from one hundred and forty-fourth Avenue-
Right.
-to Wigwam Boulevard. There is existing conduit from that point west to Cervel Avenue. The project you see here will merely pull fiber optic cable into that conduit-
Okay.
...and also install ITS equipment, cameras, whatnot, at four intersections between Cervel and one hundred and forty-fourth Avenue.
All right, and then will this go out to bid, or?
It will be bid through-
So-
ADOT.
Okay.
It is a federally funded job. What you're seeing here is the federally funded portion, which has to go through ADOT, and ADOT will, uh-
We're just doing it in two steps, in other words.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I don't wanna pull it off. Thank you very much.
Everybody else okay? Can I get a motion in a second to pursue, um, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, so we have a, um, motion from Councilmember Stip in the second from, who did I?
Holman.
Councilmember Holman? With that, can I get a, uh, roll call vote?
Councilmember Osborn?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Okay, our first item on the business is to, uh, consider a request for a new Series Twelve liquor license for Maricopa, what's it, Cameron, what's it, Pedro Restaurant located at three fifty North Dysette Road? Sue in the city clerk's office will present.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Pizzillo and members of the council. At, uh, council's direction, from a work session held in August, liquor license applications for new businesses are now being placed on the business agenda for discussion and an opportunity to vote by a roll call vote. For that reason, I'm here to present a request from Naveen Ali, applicant for Marisco's Camarón Palado Restaurant, which is located at three fifty North Dysette Road, Suite Two Oh One. This business is located on the northwest corner of Van Buren Street and Dysette Road. The previous business at this location was Wood Flame Burgers.
Yeah.
Wood Flame Burgers is no longer in business and the suite is vacant. Wood Flame Burgers did not have a liquor license. The applicant stated that there will be a manager on site at all times, and all restaurant staff serving alcohol will complete a training program. They will check ID at the time of order, and this business will be contributing to the tax base of the community. The applicant hopes to open this business soon after the state issues the liquor license. The applicant is also the owner of Gus's New York Pizza, which is located at Litchfield Road and McDowell. There is no information at this time that would prohibit the applicant from obtaining this liquor license. And that concludes my presentation. The applicant is here and available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. First, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor, Vice Mayor.
Okay, anybody in the audience like to speak? With that, can I get a motion on the table, um, in a second?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so we have the motion, um, Councilmember Campbell, and, uh, second from Councilmember Loretano, with that, um, discussion?
I just have a quick question. Uh, I do know where the location is, and this will be the only bar that is in that entire area. Am I correct, Chief? Just, you know, it's right on the corner of Dysette and Van Buren, and it's where you turn left before the light to go into the Golden Corral. It's the very last business on the right-hand side as you're going through the parking lot. So, um, because that will be, um, I'm assuming our officers patrol up there a little bit, do they not? All right, I don't think that's an issue. So, but it'll be the only, I'm just bringing that to mind, it'll be the only liquor-selling establishment in that entire quad. That's, that's where Skechers Shoes is?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm glad to see somebody's going into the, into that blank space, so that's wonderful.
Any other questions? Can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborn?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Passes six zero.
Thank you. Next item, um, we have, uh, a business is considered an authority, authorizing a city manager enter into a contract with Chase Building Team not to exceed, uh, five hundred and ten thousand for the construction of a Goodyear Branch Library. Welcome, Site Regis, please.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo, members of council, once again, it's a pleasure to be here for you this evening, uh, bringing the next phase, next step of our, uh, closure to the library for us. The agenda tonight, the purpose of this is to, uh, just review again, um, recap the fact that we're expanding the current library of approximately eighteen hundred square feet to a size of just under ten thousand square feet. Uh, the reason for the evening, uh, the, the presentation this evening is to seek approval for a five hundred and ten thousand dollar construction contract. Some of the construction elements of that is a, it is a JOC contract, a SAVE contract, which is a cooperative contract to the state of Arizona. Uh, the contractor, uh, as you mentioned, Vice Mayor Pizzillo, is Chase Building Team, they're out of Tempe. The construction timeline is ten and a half weeks, and we should obtain substantial completion on December the eighteenth. Just also recap and bring everybody up to speed again, um, on the location of this. Um, with the purchase of the Goodyear Municipal Complex, uh, is decided to put the library in the northeast building of that complex. Um, we re-engaged the design team in June, uh, to add some square footage to the design of approximately eight hundred square feet. This was to accommodate the Alexandria space. Um, in doing so, this caused us to have to relocate the fire department because it just wasn't enough room in that building to, uh, the south side of Building A, uh, designated there in red. The fire department is supportive of this move as it gives them the ability to, uh, expand another twenty, twenty-three hundred square feet of undeveloped space in that portion of the building. Our partners in this, of course, is Maricopa County Library District, the City of Goodyear, and of course, Friends of the Library. The floor plan you've seen multiple times didn't really change too much with the addition of the, uh, Alexandria space. Uh, the children's area is still the same location, the adult area is still in the, uh, on the, um, west side of the, the building, and the teen area stayed the same. The new space, just right behind the customer service desk, um, is the Alexandria. It's wide open and is able to be used by all patrons of the library, not just for the, like, Alexandria personnel. However, there'll be specific materials there that, that help promote, uh, small business, entrepreneurs, and, uh, and, and such type programs. Uh, there's also a small conference room there for breakout sessions, um, that they can collaborate and, and, and move their projects or their ideas forward, and we also have a small City of Goodyear office there. Development Services will be staffing this office several times during the week, uh, with some heightened training to help develop these, uh, young entrepreneurs and, and other facilities for them.
Do you have a pointer to show me on this, what you're talking about, where all of this extra space is?
I don't have a mouse here.
Well, what's the circle for?
The, I'm sorry, I do have a mouse, I found it. The circle is actually just a, a drop location for this tech bar. Um, it was, it was in, it, we didn't get taken out inadvertently, it's just a space to show that we're gonna be able to move this tech bar around some, um, in this location. Alexandria space is this space right here. The customer service is this area right here, and, uh, the breakout room for, um, for the, uh, Alexandria space is in the small room right here. There it is, right there. And this is the office for the city staff member, uh, that will be locked off and, and strictly for city, city staff. Uh, this area here is tech bars for the teen area, and we also have a couple of tech bars in the Alexandria space where they can come in and dock a computer and, and plug in laptops and things like that for power.
Okay. And can you, do you have a definite space now for the, um, county kiosk?
The county kiosk will be located in, or, this, this area right up in here. We've got, we're making provisions for data and power when, when we co-op with the county and they bring their stuff in. Uh, Friends of the Library will have, where am I going, will have this space right along this wall right here.
Mm-hmm.
It used to be up here, if you remember right.
Right.
Councilmember-
We're happy to move, we're happy to still move, thank you, if you don't mind.
Okay. Um, so, any other questions about the floor plan?
So is the, is the meeting room still the same? That's gonna be the shared room?
Yes, Councilmember Campbell, the, the, the space, the common-use shared space, program space is this here, it's approximately fourteen hundred square feet, fourteen hundred thirty-three square feet to be exact, and it'll be used for storytime for the library and other functions like that, and then also programmed, uh, as, as we desire for other facilities by the city, other, other functions by the city, um, Cub Scouts, HOA meetings, things like this.
And then fire has the other at the end there?
That, no, that, that, fire was moved to Building A.
They, they were moved completely out of there?
They were moved completely out, right. With, with the added space, there just wasn't enough room, even with the expansion of the building, to accommodate everything.
Okay.
So they removed the Building A.
So what are we gonna do with that space?
That's future growth space for either the library in the future to grow into, or it, it's got its own separate entrance with a back door, and it can be utilized for other city functions, um, departments, things like that in the future.
Great. Thank you. Extra room we didn't know we had.
It's working out well.
Yeah.
Uh, just to bring you to speed to the next steps, uh, if this contract is approved tonight, we'll be issuing a notice to proceed to construction on the thirtieth, next Monday. Uh, as I said earlier, the, the December eighteenth, we're expected to have substantial completion, so on the nineteenth, we can start moving in all the bookshelves, furniture, equipment, um, and set the library up so that in January, very early January, the library district can actually move into the building themselves and start, um, setting up shop for a opening in mid to late January of the, of the new library. And just to give you a, a quick budget summary, um, the design is costing us a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and this was it with the added design fees for bringing the Alexandria space into it, pre-construction fees. Um, this is the contractor that came on board and assisted us with the design of the project, uh, value engineering and, and keeping it within budget. Uh, we had a utility location for the, um, for the design, we had to find some- We had a utility location for the, for the design, we had to find some utilities, that cost us $700. This, this evening's construction budget, of course, is $510,000, which is all inclusive and it does leave us with a $20,000, almost $20,000 or 5% owner's contingency in that construction budget for unfounded things or things that need to be possibly added. We have data cabling, which will be coming to a contract at a little later date, that's $20,000. Access control, which is actually all the car reader accesses to get us in and out of the building and, and limited access in that respect, that's $17,000, which leaves us with a Maricopa County Library District furniture fixtures and equipment, which includes the collections, of $423,300. It brings us to a $1,100,000 total and the, the funds are available from library impact fees, no, no general fund fees or monies are being used. I might also add, as we move through the construction, data access, if we have savings from, from these, and we expect we will, that will be moved to the FFNE budget, adding to either collections, additional bookshelves, things like that, just to make as complete as we possibly can. And with that, I'll take questions.
First, any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to speak? Okay. With that, can I, can I get a motion on the floor in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion from Councilmember Stip. Second from Campbell, Councilmember Campbell. Okay. With that, any questions? Start over here on the right, right side, any questions?
Get it done. Tired of talking about it.
I'm satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna thank you, Regis. I know this has been a huge undertaking and you have been so steadfast in seeing that this design is not compromised and you got the big picture of what the council wanted in as much as what we wanted for our library. And we just wanna thank you and on behalf of the Friends, thank you for including us in the beginning stages so that we felt ownership to this and we, we're very happy and I think we're all going to be so proud of this new library when we finally get it opened and running. But it'll be due to you and, and you dogging it all the time. So thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell.
My comment is much to be, let's get her done.
A terrible, terrible pun came, this is one for the books.
Okay. All right, she got, she got that.
You're right, that was terrible.
Just, just one comment, I know when we first started, we were looking at a little over 6,000 square feet. And I really appreciate the fact, to be honest with you, that we squeezed it up closer to 10,000 because of all the things we have in the city that I think we really need, one thing we've been lacking is the library. So I appreciate all the effort and it looks like everything's on budget?
Everything is absolutely within budget.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Regis.
Thank you.
With that, can I get a, let's see, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Six, six-zero. All right, next, let's see, item for consider appointments and reappointment to council subcommittee of 2013 to 14, Robert Boer, Assistant to the Mayor, will do the presentation.
Robert, who's that? Hello, Vice Mayor and Council. As you all know, you discussed the appointments to subcommittees at an earlier work session. We wanted to bring it forward again just because there was one change, and here we're gonna get it up here, I think. There was one change based on discussion among council members after the discussion, so we wanted to make sure and bring it forward just because of that change and that would be Councilmember Campbell remaining on the Boards and Commissions Selection Committee and Councilmember Loretano would be going on to the City Audit Committee.
This is probably really old technology for you guys too, isn't it?
It's old technology. Listen to that.
For these two young guys, yeah, this is, this is old technology here.
I would just go ahead and read them off, how about that?
You can't top that one, right?
So, on the Boards and Commission Selection Committee, you'd be appointing Councilmember Osborne, Councilmember Campbell, and Councilmember Homan. On community funding, you would be appointing Vice Mayor Pizzillo, Councilmember Osborne, Councilmember Stip. City Audit will be Vice Mayor Pizzillo, Councilmember Stip, and Councilmember Loretano. And then with the Goodyear Public Safety Retirement Board will be Councilmember Stip. And the Goodyear Volunteer and Reserve Firefighter Retirement Trust is also Councilmember Stip. And I can take any questions.
Are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anybody wish to speak in the audience? With that, can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Homan, second from Councilmember Osborne. Any discussion? With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, six-zero. Next up, 7.4, we'll now consider approving a request for preliminary plat for La Ventilla, Phase One subdivision, 14.48 acres into 110 single-family court home lots and nine track located at the northwest corner of Cervel Avenue and Portland Street, within the Canyon Trail's planned area development, subject to stipulations. Steve is back.
You wanna show Matt and Rob how to do that?
All of a sudden electricity goes out on you. What happened here?
It broke it.
I'll pay for it later, I'm sure, but.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. This is actually, the next item as well is Phase Two, so this is two phases of the same project. If you thought it more efficient, I could describe both parcels-
Please do.
-into one presentation.
Please do.
So we are looking at two phases, La Ventilla, it is located southwest corner of Cervel and I-10. To the north of Phase Two is the interstate. To the east of Phase One there is Cervel Avenue. To the south and to the west is existing development within Canyon Trails. And that green area is an existing Green Bay, Green Belt with trail through Canyon Trails along with a city water facility.
Can you, which, where's Cervel?
Right there, okay. Thank you.
Phase One is about 14 and a half acres, 110 lots. Phase Two is about 18 and a half acres, 111 lots. The design is a motor court design.
What does a motor court design mean?
Well, what I'm hoping this, what this picture does show is a motor court connects to this local street and then you have six lots fronting onto this motor court. And this exhibit shows you how the pods are located along the street. There's a few pods right there. The streets are private, the local streets are private, they will be owned and maintained by the HOA. The motor courts will also be private. And back to the motor court design, the garages and the front doors access the court for four of the houses. For these two that front the local street as well, those front doors will face the street. So the streetscape when you go down the street will be front doors, the garages will be accessed off the motor courts. With this design, the typical design is a six-lot motor court. What you have are use and benefit easements established with, with this plat and with the final plat forthcoming to where this lot here, for example, has this yard here all the way up to his neighbor's wall over his property. So that's where the use and benefit easement comes into play. And you'll see that repeated as you go up the pod. The purpose of that is it gives each homeowner a larger private area.
Is this the garages? Are these the garages?
And this was an exhibit provided by the applicant showing how they intend those areas to be used, how the homeowners will use those private spaces.
May I ask another question?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Can a fire truck get down there and turn around? I mean, a ladder truck certainly couldn't get down there.
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, the motor court was designed with a length that did not exceed our maximum, the 150 feet.
Length or width?
Length.
Length, okay. Well, we know they can go forward. Can they turn around?
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, the fire truck would not enter into the motor court. They kept it at a length that met our standards. If they exceeded that length, then they would have to provide measures for fire truck access, but they kept the length of the motor court within our standard, so there is no need for the truck to go down the motor court.
Then how are they gonna put out the fire if it's the last unit? Run the hose?
Yes, ma'am. That would be the intent.
Oh my gosh. Okay.
Question, Councilmember Stip.
Steve, these are, new name for a motor court, used to be cluster home. Is this, am I tracking the same zero lot line? That, the, these are all old school terms, is this correct?
Yes, they're same names.
Very, very similar, 'cause I'm sure it's, according to the developer, a much better product than what we currently have on the market in the city. But we have these already in the city, north of, well, Cambridge or I don't know what, Virginia, I think is what we call it on that side, north of there and Bullard, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we already, we've already have this in our city, in similar design, similar layout, similar challenges to address Councilmember Campbell's concern. And I personally know that our fire department is absolutely capable of addressing the issue there because I personally have done the training with them through the college on this.
Well, does that make it right, though?
Absolutely.
All right. Is this the gated community on Virginia that you're talking about? 'Cause I'm gonna drive out there in the morning and take a look at them.
No, it's not gated.
It's not the gated?
The next one behind it.
The next one behind it, okay. 'Cause I'm not familiar with this. I know that the streets in Pebble Creek, that if a fire truck comes down, no one can be parked on the street 'cause he can't get by. And I just don't want the same thing to happen. I know our design guidelines say it's okay, but that doesn't always mean it's right. So that's my only concern. I just don't want, I don't wanna lose anybody and I don't wanna lose a house because our fire department could not get to them.
Is Paul, Paul here?
They're all gonna be clustered.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
I think Stip kind of addressed it, but do you wanna address Councilmember Campbell's question?
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Stip with regards to the training and being prepared for these types of setups with the homes. We would also have the companies that are first do in that area to make sure that they do review this area and that are familiar with the strategies and tactics that would go along with a home setup like this.
Well, then those homes necessarily will not have fire hydrants in front of them, will they?
I didn't see the-
I haven't seen that on them. I don't know where they showed the fire hydrants are, but if you're gonna be running hoses up there, I mean, I'm not familiar with how you fight a fire, that's not my job, but if they have fire hydrants in front of, if we have a fire hydrant at least in every one of these areas, I don't know, it just, just seems odd to me.
Yeah, Steve's pointing out the hydrants right now.
Well, you're showing me, okay, so where's, there's one by each quad?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Anything else?
Uh-uh.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, open space is important for development like this when you have a larger density of population in there. What they're proposing in Phase One is a recreational facility that would have a pool. In Phase Two, they were looking at more passive type open space, that large area adjacent to the interstate would be improved with a trail system. Approximately 11, 11 and a half acres of open space total for this development, along with existing facilities within Canyon Trails, including that Green Bay Trail System. As I previously mentioned, all streets will be private, though not gated. They will be owned and maintained by the HOA. The HOA will also maintain all of the landscaping within the community, including the landscaping down the motor court way. Staff did review the subdivision in regards to the PAD, our subdivision regulations. We do find it consistent with those regulations. The item did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, both phases were planned, commissioned, they are recommending approval. And with that, Vice Mayor, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we are recommending approval and staff's available for any questions.
Well, with that, let me, let's go ahead and get something on there so we can go ahead and start asking questions. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anybody in the audience wanna talk on this subject?
Oh, there's a lady in the back.
There's a lady? I don't see her.
She's in the back, yeah.
Do you wanna come on up? Sorry, I couldn't see you back there. Would you just please speak into the microphone, give me your name and address for the record?
Good evening, I'm Laura Serbin with Serbin Studio. We're an architectural firm located in Goodyear. And just from experience, the site plan that I did see just up there, I'm not, I haven't seen it until tonight, but I think it would be nice if there was more green space, if they took out maybe one or two in that massive development. If a little kid wants to go out on a tot lot or just go play, they have to go pretty far to find some green space. And I know it's a numbers game, but that's, that's my comment, just a little urban, urban planning and making more room for green space, just if you looked at that mass of development and those lots, those houses are really tight together. You just took a couple out just for some designated parks, that's all.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and get something up now and we'll open that up. Can I get a motion in a second?
You wanna do just one of these at a time?
We're gonna do one of them at a time.
Okay.
This would be for the-
I'll make the motion for Phase One.
Second?
Second.
Okay. So I have a motion from Councilmember Stip and a second from Homan, all right? With that, open up for question, we'll start over on the left. Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I do agree with the observation that those homes really are packed in there and there is not a lot of space and I would wonder if the developer would be interested in, in cutting down a few. Just, if you just look at, would you put the, the map back up, please? You just look at it and you, if I bought in the very far corner, I'd have to get in my car to drive over to get to the pool, but there's absolutely no tot lot, there's no, no passive park, no- no nothing for the people in that phase, in Phase Two. And, and I agree, I just hate to see that we're cramming so much on these little lots. That's just my opinion.
Yes, I did. Was it on, but Bill, was it on this? Like, go ahead and let Bill.
Yeah, rather than bouncing back and forth. With your pen for Phase One, can you point out what is in? What the, there's like three or four clearly green space spots on that map that we're seeing right now. Can you just tell me what, what they are? Retention basin, retention basin, and then that area in the middle, is that the pool area?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so there are no tot lots, no mini parks, nothing? Is that correct?
Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, this area does not show the pool yet, but in this area would be the pool, tot lot, Ramada, kind of their main recreation area right here.
Okay. What is the demographic for the folks that are typically buying these kinds of properties? Do we know?
Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, I could probably defer that to the applicant.
These don't appear to be big enough for, you know, family homes. They seem to be two bedroom, three bedroom, maybe. So if we could get the answer to that, it might help drive us toward a whether a park is, no sense in having a tot lot if we're not going to have tots living in the area.
My name is Kevin Major from KB Home, Vice Mayor, Councilmember. To your question, we look to appeal to a vast array specifically with this type of product. Everything from a younger professional or professional couple. Because of the sides of the yards, you still get that home feeling, but you don't have the larger yard that some people may not be looking for, but they, they'd like to have a nice patio, as well as a more mature sector that has lived the American dream, had the very large house, very large yard. And so kind of both ends of the spectrum, and it's just a different type of product than we've put out in the past. So I know that's kind of a broad answer, but we, we feel it'll appeal to a ray of demographics.
So it is conceivable that we'll have young families?
Correct.
To, you know, young professionals that are just having kids and?
Yes, and especially because the product is big enough because of the the vertical side of it to where you can have multiple children and have bedrooms for them.
Yeah, I'm kind of envisioning a more modern brownstone, kind of a?
Exactly.
Okay. Then I think we have an issue with parks.
Then we do?
I think we do.
Yeah, we don't have.
Actually, my, thank you, my, my questions for Steve, a couple of questions related to this area. Steve, this obviously is right up against the I-10 and I can't visualize. Is there a sound wall on this area? I know you have the landscape buffer. I don't know what the, that setback is. What is the landscape buffer, 50 feet, 500 feet? I don't know what that is. And is there a sound wall there?
Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, the sound wall is not there yet.
It's not there yet?
The applicant has provided plans from ADOT showing that there is a wall proposed. Approximately about 15 feet high. That will run for most of the length of that northern boundary. And that green belt is about 100 feet wide.
Okay, and to the, the east of Saraval, the open spot right there, what, what is that zoned? Is that high, medium high density? It's also residential?
Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, it is residential. It is townhome within Canyon Trails PAD.
My other question, you know, we've been having, this, this is a lot higher density than obviously rest of the way south going down Saraval. And we've been having real issues with the truck traffic. And you're, and we're, we're talking about more residences. And, and I, you know, the product itself, yes, I think we have an issue with some park situation because there's this type of developments right behind my development in the gated community. And I know that the people who live back there are typically the younger generation, may have startup families, or maybe, you know, single moms and teen or something like that. But there certainly is a lot of traffic and I'm still concerned about the truck, truck traffic going down Saraval, and now we're adding higher density to this. My other issue that I have with this whole development, this came to be in Goodyear before I was ever on, is having residences right up against a freeway with that kind of pollution. And I've been to conference after conference that stated this is not good for people. And so right now, I don't know a position I would vote on this. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I think you have a good start for this. I like the idea of the court homes. I like the idea of something having a little higher density. I think that is a good mix for our community because not everybody wants the yard or can afford all the land or the upkeep of the land. Phase One, I think, is better done than Phase Two. Phase Two, all the traffic is around, I mean, all the, the green space is surrounding it, so I'd like to see something in the middle that would kind of break it up a little and not just for children, but a tot lot would be nice, but just for anyone because green spaces throughout the community also cool the community in the summer and they do have lots of benefits for people of all ages who might want to take a walk or walk their dog or just go out for an afternoon walk. It just seems, it's got some good frontage. It looks like it's, you've done a good job with the architecture, but I, I just have to see a little bit more. It just seems very, almost like apartment-like, a little bit too much and not really enough green spaces, especially in that Phase Two. So those are my concerns right here. With the truck traffic, I think we might solve that problem once Cotton Lane is open again. I think that will result, right now, we're having problems with it. But I think once we get the 303, that will, I'm thinking that might take care of itself, but we can then put the, reroute the truck traffic off to Cotton Lane. So that, those are my concerns. I just don't really like Phase Two. It just seems too boxy and too, not to be hypercritical, but there's, it's all concrete.
A question for the, for the city attorney. On the preliminary plat, if that's adopted and you come back for a final, can you require some tweaks on the preliminary to go to the final? Or do you lose kind of your control over that once you've approved the preliminary plat?
Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, my, my suggestion is if you want to make significant changes to a plat, you do it prior to adopting the preliminary plat. Because typically, once you've hit the conditions of approval in the preliminary plat, then the final should more or less be automatic. So if you're going to make significant changes, you may want to continue the matter, send it back to staff, have them work through it, and bring it back at a, at a later date, rather than try to put stipulations in.
I see a consensus here with the council. There's already a motion on the preliminary for, for plat, Phase One. Do we need to amend that motion to, how would you word that to send it back?
Just make a motion to amend the Phase One to a later date. You can either designate it or?
All right, hold on, okay, hold on a second. Applicant, want to say something? Yeah, I can't see you from back behind there, so.
Sorry about that. Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, my name is Chris Jones with Anderson Baron. We're the planners on the project. A lot of the questions that you've brought up have been brought up throughout the process of developing this project. This project is quite challenged with a lot of constraints because of the existing development that's around it. We have access issues. We're very tied to where those points are, which dictates a lot of where our open space ends up being. We have the constraints of the freeway and we've worked very closely with staff in addressing a lot of these issues. One of the things I don't think that was made clear is that this site was originally planned for townhouse and we're now asking for it to be cluster or court home as a part of the PAD. It was originally approved for over 550 units. We're less than half of that. So we've significantly downzoned and reduced the amount of density that's already approved for this area. And by doing that with this product, we've looked at focusing on minimizing the open space that's private because of the maintenance issues and a lot of young professionals don't want to have to deal with that, to putting that open space in the common areas. And we've done that by offering, I think it's over 35% open space on that site. Your typical development would get around 10 to 15%. So we're doubling that. And with that, we're actually are providing amenities as well as amenities that are surrounding the community. What isn't made aware is that in this area right here, a part of the master development is an existing tot lot and park. We've gone ahead and added more open space to that area to make it feel like a greater park in size and scale, while also taking advantage of the existing amenity that's there. Trails is always the number one thing in market studies for developments like this. And we have an abundance amount of trails, especially regionally. The north buffer that is 100 feet is connecting into an existing trail network. We also have the trail through the wash that bisects our property. Two huge amenities that are huge market selling points for this community that people like to take advantage of. And with the trail running through the project, through the wash, that doesn't even go into the open space that we're accounting for, that is around 35%. We also are offering that pool amenity and some play structures. Right now, this plan doesn't show the design, but in this area, there will be some play area in that area in addition to the pool that's being provided, as well as open space on the south portion of that. So we've worked very closely with staff in trying to make sure a lot of these issues were addressed. And based on the constraints that we have, we feel as though we've done the best job we possibly can in addressing that while reducing the density of the property, providing amenities that residents find desirable, and providing a significant amount of open space for a development that you typically wouldn't find. Are there any other questions?
Any, any questions for the applicant? Go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions. You told me that, or told all of us, that you are devoting 35% to green area. Are you, well, open space, I call it green area, sorry. Against the freeway, is that where the trails are?
That's one of the trail networks, including through this area here is also a trail that we're connecting to and actually providing a path that will tie into that.
Okay. I appreciate what you've done and I know you've been constrained. This is a different council. If I would have been on council, I would have never voted to allow you to put 500 anything on those lots because those lots aren't big enough. But I really feel that we need to talk about this, about having more green area in Phase Two. I think that's Phase Two, the one at the top.
Yes.
I appreciate you making the tot lot a little bit bigger, but you've still got homes on the whole backside of the freeway that have no green area at all except behind them for the freeway. And, and that's just what I'm concerned with. I'd just like to see some more green.
Well, that is a 100-foot setback and trail network that is in there, and it is tying to a regional trail network.
Sorry, I apologize. My name is Dan Ox here. I'm, I'm with, I'm the civil engineer on the project. I'd just like to point out that each one of those pods along, each one of these pods that backs up against this, this green space connects to that trail, trail network. So it's just, it's not a closed off pod where they have to come out towards the front. There's no connectivity to that trail system there. Each one of those pods is connected to that trail network.
You're going to have people running behind their house all the time?
That's okay.
Having done a lot of these, your typical Paseo behind a unit, you're really looking at, you know, anywhere from 35 feet to around 50 to maybe 75 feet on the large side. And by having 100 is quite a significant depth. Some of your homes, your lots are 45 by 100, it's your whole unit away from that sound wall that, that will be provided on the freeway. It doesn't feel like someone's running in, in your backyard. So, and if you can see here on this exhibit, these courts, I guess, that really isn't made clear, they're open-ended. So as you pull into the court, you're actually looking between these units down a pathway that actually will connect all the way through to that trail network in that buffer area. So it allows those pods to actually embrace into that space and utilize that.
Are those view fencing that will go along that entire trail system in the back?
They will not be view fencing, especially along that, that north end. We did, as part of the work that we did with the staff, we did do a sound study. And the sound study recommended that we build a, a wall of a certain height to, to reduce the decibel level in those buildings that, that border the, the freeway. And so the, the, the home builder has taken that into account and they are building those walls per the recommendations of the sound study, so no, it will not be view fencing.
Thank you.
I, I guess, I understand your point, but I still have concerns when I look at your streetscape. There, the lots are so small. That's why I say it's all concrete. You look at the front yards, it's street, sidewalk, house, very little trees. And then if you don't have any green through that main heart of your project, it may be around, but your, your whole heart is just going to be concrete. And when it's 118, that is not going to be very nice with, with no real green there.
Actually, what we've done by removing the garage off of the street scene and putting it onto the motor court, we've actually increased the amount of landscaping that you do see on the street scene. And we're allowed, we're able to actually provide more trees along that and provide a more inviting and shaded program than you typically would have because of the number of driveways you, you would experience. Now with that removed, we have front porches, we have architecture facing onto the street with sidewalks coming off onto it, allowing us to do the landscaping. We're providing a narrow street section which we feel makes it feel more like an intimate street scene, more pedestrian friendly and to slow down traffic. This was all, some of the things that we were thinking as we're developing this product and this, this type of development, how do we make it pedestrian friendly? How do we make it inviting with the landscape? And a lot of that is just, let's get rid of those garages. Let's get rid of those concrete driveways that really prevent any sort of landscaping really to embrace that area.
Well, I guess we're just going to have to agree to disagree because I don't see it that way.
Councilmember Stip?
I'm looking at a, at a, at a Google map. I don't know if I can say that or not, but I just did. Google map of the existing area right now. And what we can't see are the bike pathways through that are on the outside of this and where that tot lot is, that's on the adjacent property in the green space that's in the existing Canyon Trails. If you go up a little bit higher, yeah, right there. And that green, green belt there and then the entire green belt that runs through it. And we're treating this like this is going to be walled off and it's not going to be. This is not our typical walled subdivision.
That is correct.
So this is, I don't, I hate to use the word integrated, but it's going to be integrated into the existing.
It, it will be integrated into the entire Canyon Trails master plan community. That is correct. If I could. Sorry, I'm not very good with these either. To your, to your point exactly, along connecting these areas will, will be a trail system to take, to, to allow the, the residents to move through the entire development and to connect with the, the entire trail system that runs not only within the development, but along the, along the channel and throughout the entire community. That's absolutely correct.
Yeah, and it, and the path through the channel is up. And I'm, I'm not even sure that that's actually even a irrigation, or not a irriga, is that a? a, it's not even a retention. Is that designed to move water when it rains, that green space? It is. Steve, okay. But even the, even the sidewalk that runs through it is not in the center of it. I mean, typically, we see the sidewalk run through the middle of it, and then when it rains, it gets buried or, you know, flooded. Where this, the, the sidewalk is up, and you know, from a, I, I think a layout perspective, townhomes, et cetera, that's what this area is for. It butts up to the, to the water plant, butts up to the highway. I mean, that's what, that's what these areas are for. The only hangup that I'm seeing, I mean, I'm, is the, is for Phase One, the lack of and, because we don't see what the pool looks like, an amenity, if you will, for the kids who aren't swimming. And then secondly, the, in Phase Two, that huge just strip of asphalt and houses that run along the court, the road that's got two, two courts on either end of it. I think if there's a way to pop a little green space in the middle of that, you may have a, you may have a win on this. I don't know. But somewhere, yeah, that entire, if you think about that whole row, it's just one, let's, one, two, three blocks long of nothing but houses, sidewalks, and, and roadway. But as far as I'm concerned, the density fits, the product fits, meets a different demographic in, in the city. It's in the right location. So, you know, I, I think we're voting on two separate things. We've got Phase One and Phase Two. I'd like to focus on Phase One, so if you guys have something that shows what the amenity looks like around the pool area that's a little bit more detailed, that would be helpful for me before we start, before we start discussing what's going to happen with Phase Two. Because nobody's, I haven't heard anybody complain about Phase One yet.
Let me just pause here for a second. Is it Phase One where the council has the big, big issue, or is it Phase Two? I'm looking here for the, or is it both?
It's both to me.
Carolyn?
I, I thought, yeah, both.
Phase One's up against the freeway, correct?
No.
Phase One's down, so Phase Two's, I don't have a problem with Phase One.
I don't have a problem with Phase One. Phase Two is, is my greenish, green space issue.
Sure.
Yeah, my big concern is Phase Two, but I wouldn't want to vote on Phase One separate because that may affect how they do Phase Two, since they seem to be intertwined anyway.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is it almost seems like, and I'm not sure what they can do to, to tweak this, it's gone through the planning and zoning, but I would rather have it take a second look than to have a vote that's not going to clear it. So, and I don't think you want that either. So I, I think really probably at this point, it's probably better to, to end up tabling both of them unless I'm hearing anything different from anybody else. Because I don't think you have it here to, to get it through. So with that in mind, I'm going to have to amend. Phase One's already on there, and then when we, when we do Phase Two, tell me what I need to do to, to do that. Is everybody sort of in a agreement at that at this point?
You have a motion on the floor, so just make an amendment.
Which came from?
Yeah, just make a, just to make your amendment to continue the matter, then you just table the second matter.
Okay. Was it Stip?
I'll make a, amend my original motion to table the matter.
Okay. That's Phase One.
Right.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Posed? Ayes have it?
Did you have a second? I'm sorry.
Yeah, a second. As a council member, Campbell. Now, on Phase Two, same thing. Can I get a motion to table? You want to do the same thing, Stip?
Sure, I'll make a motion for the preliminary plat Phase Two to table for further staff work.
Second.
So we got a, by Councilmember Stip, second by Councilmember Campbell, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed?
Nay.
So five, one. Alls we can do is, I'm going to suggest we'll get, to get with staff, because my feeling was as if we would have gone through there, you don't want to, you don't want the whole thing killed at this point, so.
No, we appreciate that.
That's why it's better to table it if there's any, and that's why I was trying to get a, kind of get a feel for, for council here. So at this point, we're going to have to get together with staff, maybe give some input. I don't know how we want to go about this with the ones that, that kind of had the issue. We'll meet with Wynette, maybe, to try to get some feeling on that, so that they're not coming back not knowing what we need to make this.
That was going to be my question, if we could get just a little more clear definition of what you're looking for.
And we will get that, and we will, we will get that to you, okay?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see, next up, consider approving a water order of 88,171.1 acre feet from the Central Arizona Project for calendar year 2004, and adopt a resolution authorizing a city manager to execute any documents necessary to implement the sale of 4,275 acre feet of long-term storage credits to the City of El Mirage. Mark Holmes will do the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council. It is that time of year again to do our water order from the Central Arizona Project. Recommendations before you, recommendation number one is to order a total of 8,171.0, and that is a minor correction from what you have in your packet, that your packet says point one, it should be 8,171.0 acre feet of Central Arizona Project water supplies for the city for 2014, that's calendar year. Funding for 3,896 acre feet, which is slightly less than $600,000, provided through the 2014 capital improvement plan. Funding for 4,275 acre feet at a cost of $658,350 is provided through the proposed agreement with, with El Mirage, which I'll get to as part of recommendation number two. This is a graph, I just wanted you to be aware, I showed you in October of 2012 pertaining to the city getting back into ordering annual CAP water supplies. And this shows on the left vertical axis our total account balance for our long-term storage credit, credits. And you see that in 2012, we had slightly more than 80,000 acre feet total in our long-term storage credit bank account. You see the years on the horizontal axis in the bottom. The, on the right is an acre feet from zero to 18,000 acre feet. And the red line is our current and projected trends for water demand for our current service area. So you see that in 2012, we were about little, around 8,000. In 2013, we're approaching somewhere about 89 or 9,000. And this just shows you that as we, we, in, in 2012, we ordered 1,825 acre feet of long, of, of CAP water to help enhance our long-term storage credit bank account. And you see that if we double that, as we mentioned in that year in that work study, that if we kept doubling that, you'll see by the year 2016, we'll actually hit that projected water demand. That's to show you the help, this is helping stabilize and enhance our long-term storage credit bank account. Recommendation number two, again, this is a, a resolution that would allow us to enter an agreement with El Mirage. This would allow for the sale of the city's long-term storage credits in the amount of 4,275 acre feet. The City of El Mirage has agreed to pay the city $187 per acre foot for a total of $799,425 plus the long-term storage credit fee, which is $250 on top of that. The city would order the 4,275 acre feet of CAP water supplies to replenish the long-term storage credits that we sold to El Mirage, so we'd have a net offset of zero, basically no impact on our long-term storage credit bank account. Benefits to the city, this will allow the city to enhance its long-term storage credit bank account through these orders. The city is promoting regional water resource collaboration, and the city will have a net of $141,075 within its water enterprise funds at the end of this venture. And with that, I would entertain any questions.
Any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Anybody in the audience like to talk on this subject matter? Okay, with that, can I get a motion for, to approve the total water order of 8171.0 acre feet from the Central Arizona Project for the calendar year 2004?
So moved.
Second.
So we got a motion from Councilmember Stip, second from Councilmember Lortano, open for discussion. Any questions for Mark?
I got a question.
Go ahead.
When you're hear about on the news about them cutting the allocation possibly in 2014 for CAP water, if we continue in this drought phase as we're buying the water, what happens to our allocation? Do they not take our money if it's cut? What happens?
Great question, Vice Mayor Pazillo and Councilmember Lortano. If the CAP declares through the Secretary of Interior that there is a shortage, if this request is going, and the city were to have its CAP allocation reduced in a, they'll project that a year in advance, what would happen is the city would then be forced to order less water than potentially we normally would, depending on the year which that shortage was declared. We would then rely on that long-term storage credit bank account to ensure that we were able to meet all of our water demand needs.
And then, and then if it were to replenish and the shortage would be over, we'd be back to what we had originally ordered? We don't have to go back through the process again?
That's correct.
Thank you for making that.
You bet. If I could ask one more note, I almost forgot. Just to let you know that the City of El Mirage is going to be taking this to their council on October 1st. That is the deadline for our CAP water order. So it's midnight of October 1st. So we'll be anticipating their answer, and as soon as we get it, we'll be sending that over on.
Thank you.
Go ahead and hand Councilmember Stip.
Mark, just to, I guess, ensure my understanding of it, the CAP allocation in the, in the event that the secretary declares the shortage, there is however, a pecking order, if you will, of what doesn't get supplied. And our water is pretty far down on the list before it, it's affected. Is that not correct?
Mr. Vice Mayor and Councilmember Stip, that is correct. The first water that will be cut is any excess, approximately 250 to 300,000 acre feet. That's, the canal is currently able to deliver 1.5 million acre feet per year. So that's the first water supply to be cut. Second is the ag pool, which is another 350 or so thousand acre feet. So in total, we'd have to have quite a shortage in order to impact municipal and industrial and the, the Indian water. That is, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. That was question one. Question two, the 4,275 acre feet that we're going to sell to El Mirage that we need to replenish, is that included in the 871?
That is correct. We're, we're selling them long-term storage credits from our bank account, and then we're going to purchase an additional 4,275 in 2014 of CAP water to replenish what we sold them.
So a single motion to purchase 8,171 acre feet is sufficient to cover both our need and what we're going to sell?
That is correct. If you recall last, in 2012, we ordered 1,825 acre feet for this calendar year, and we discussed doubling that every year until we, until we hit our trend of our, our water demand. So this year, we're a little over the 3650.
Okay, I just want to make sure we didn't need a second motion to buy more.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else?
First, I'd just comment, I appreciate all the hard work, kind of somewhat familiar with some of the issues you're dealing with. And again, the financing, to me, is always going to be the key, how you buy this stuff long-term. So keep working on a financing plan so that we have the water we need to grow with that. I appreciate it. Can I get a, I guess, we've got the motion, we've got the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed? The ayes have it. City Clerk, would you read the resolution by title only?
Adopt Resolution 13-1571, authorizing the city manager or designee to execute any and all documents necessary to implement the sale of 4,275 acre feet of long-term storage credits to the City of El Mirage.
Can I get a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
So we got a motion from Councilmember Campbell, and a second from Councilmember Stip. Any further discussion? All right, with that, let's see, roll call vote?
Councilmember Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pizzillo?
Aye.
Passed a 6-0.
All right, we're at the information item now, and we, does council have any comments, commendations or report? Can I start with Carolyn Holman first, and we'll work our way this way?
I, this has been the week, or last week was the week, since this is just Monday, for homeowner alliance meetings in the historic Goodyear in the northern subdivisions. And I just want to commend staff, the police, the parks, and if I forget somebody at the code, that come and attend the meetings and listen to the concerns and provide answers to them. It is, to me, it's going beyond what would, they would have to do. And as, since we started the alliance, there's been a serious growth in communication about, among the, the residents as well. So I just wanted to mention all of you and to say thank you, because I think it's been very effective. We have some longstanding issues that have been resolved. We have some great park development going on, and it's just a real, real asset to our communities, and your help is, is invaluable.
Okay, thank you. In the last couple of weeks, I attended the North Subdivision monthly meeting last week, and our subdivision is plugging right along. They're very self-sufficient, and they come up with the neatest projects and solve them. And they're right now in the process of getting authorization from each of the residents to put their house numbers in the alleys, so that will help police and fire if they're in the back, they'll know who, who lives where. And also, they're in the process of cleaning out the community garden and getting ready to plant for fall. And we had a wonderful discussion with our Parks and Rec folks on how to do it, and we just thank Park and Rec for helping that community have such a wonderful project, because it really is something everyone kind of comes and looks. We're the, I guess, the flagship of, of Goodyear to have that community garden. I also want to congratulate Chief Luigi on his selection as our fire chief. We're very excited about that. And last but not least, I didn't mention before, but I was selected to participate in Leadership West, and I am in Class 20. And this past weekend, I went on a retreat with 22 of my classmates. And while I was there, I did text the city manager to tell him I was surviving barely up in the mountains. But we, we are going to have a wonderful year, and as all of you know, or if you don't know, Sherilyn Holman is one of the founding members of Leadership West, who has never gone through Leadership West. And so I've got a lot of wonderful folks to, to help mentor me through the program, and that's all I have.
I would just wonder, how were those sleeping arrangements?
Oh, awful.
Yeah, that's like, that's like.
We were in a boy, a wonderful Boy Scout camp in bunks. I haven't been in a bunk since I was a kid.
I just wanted to thank Baskin Robbins, because they were a great community partner this weekend, and they held an event to raise money for Phoenix Children's Hospital, and, and that was really nice. There was a lot of media out there for coverage. Also, my, my team that I have on the chamber, we had gotten together to pass out decals to Goodyear businesses, and there was 100 businesses that we were hitting. But we also took our flyer of the Small Business Little Show, I don't know what we're calling it, the Small Business Summit, that's right, that we're having in October. So at least 100 of our businesses got that flyer that we, you know, hand-delivered.
Good. Bill? Hmm, myself, the Vice Mayor, the Mayor. While you were there, no, Sherilyn was there.
Where'd we go?
The Veterans Center opening at.
I was there.
You were there.
I was sitting there with the mayor sweating to death.
Oh, that, yep, okay. The Australia Mountain Community College opened a Veterans Center designated strictly to assist our veterans in their educational needs, job placement. It just, a complete center dedicated to them. And now they are one of the top 20 colleges in all, universities, colleges in the country to have designated space for, for our veterans. So that was, that was pretty exciting for us, for us all to be there. Our own Captain Sean Anderson gave the keynote speech at the 9/11 memorial ceremony that they did before the opening of the Veterans Day Center. So that was, that was pretty neat to, pretty neat to see. We had a couple of my last. We had a couple of, uh, my last, um, meetings with, uh, council subcommittee...
Yes.
Appointment, the Appointment Commission, whatever we called it. Um, I had the, uh, I had the privilege of serving with councilmember Campbell, um, since its inception, uh, councilmember Gelsner and, uh, councilmember Osborne, uh, subsequent to that. And, uh, it was quite an experience, um, not only to, uh, get to understand all of the commissions that we have, because I think we have seated at least one person on every single thing we have, but, um, but also to see the great community folks that we've got. So, um, I'm, uh, thankful for the time that I had and, uh, for those of you that are on it, um, you know, enjoy, uh, enjoy the rest of your time with that. We had the, uh, German Air Force Oktoberfest this past weekend, um, and Historic Goodyear. That was the, the, my last meeting with that as well. Uh, passed the torch to, uh, councilmember Holman. And, uh, when I started to look back over the things that we had done in Historic Goodyear, um, a lot of it, you know, I say we, uh, but a lot of it was staff that got things done. Um, that, uh, alleyway that we saw earlier tonight, the Judy, uh, with, um, Palm Valley Church, the volunteers, that overgrown alleyway behind Park Shadows, that's in Historic Goodyear. And that was, and has always been a sore spot for that community. And, uh, to have a group regularly dedicated to keeping it clean and, and, um, and, uh, you know, just well-maintained has really been a blessing for them. But the biggest issue that, um, that community faced, which really we all faced and I think everybody was unaware of, was the safety and traffic concern around, around Latty Core Elementary School. Uh, because of the redesign of the school itself, a lot of the kids were exiting out, uh, I'm gonna say out the back and then crossing the streets. And there was a lot of street traffic and a lot of kids running across the, the roadway. It, the school is in Avondale, but it butts Goodyear. Um, our residents were very concerned about that. And, um, through the dedication of, uh, Lily Schuet, who I mentioned last week retired, but working with, uh, our traffic engineers and our engineering staff, the staff from El, uh, Avondale Elementary School District and the staff from the City of, of Avondale, um, worked out a plan with the school district to reconfigure their pickup and drop-off location onto their property off of the streets. And the neighborhood is extremely relieved over it. It's a wonderful job and none of that could've been done without, uh, the work of the city's staff. So, um, I intend somehow, I don't know how I'm gonna pull it off, but to go over to the City of Avondale and thank them and their staff as well during one of their council meetings. Um, it, it absolutely was government cooperation at its best to get the three, uh, government agencies together to get something done for the people, for the safety of the kids. It was, and we did it without, not as a result of, we did it beforehand and it was amazing. So, thanks to everybody.
Um, I attended the Ballet Under the Stars at Estrella, which was great and our vice mayor introduced it all and he did an absolutely wonderful job to see the little ballerinas out there. They're having the open house for the Arizona Ballet, what, October twelfth?
Yes.
And it's open to anyone. Um, and then I attended the Oktoberfest with a thousand of my closest friends. Uh, yeah, there probably was. Um, and I do wanna thank both Chief Geiger and, um, Chief Luigi. For the last couple of weeks, we've had several events in Goodyear, public safety events. And I want you to thank all your personnel, your public safety for everything, um, keeping property safe and people safe the last couple of weeks. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Um, city manager, have anything to report?
I do. Uh, speaking of the ballet, uh, under the stars, uh, we did get a note from the Parks and Recreation Department that the attendance was approximately thirty-five hundred this year, which was an increase significantly. And now that's an estimate and we'll be getting, you know, more data there, but, um, it seemed to be a very good event. The art walk, uh, artists sold some pieces, the vendors were busy, we had the face painting that went on that the kids loved. So it sounds like it was a, a beautiful evening and everyone had a, a great time. I do have some items I know that we're gonna follow up on, um, changing some words and, um, under the breweries and classifications to allow, um, special event use permits for breweries and also follow up, uh, soften the language in the brew pub and microbreweries so we're not limiting, um, entertainment to just one there. And also, city manager's office will work with city council to get clarity and more information on the law of Antilia, um, Phase One and Phase Two.
Let me, let me just pause you there for a second. Uh, I guess for the city attorney, how do you wanna handle this? Because we've gotta provide some feedback to the, you know, um, to the applicant there and there was various comments out here, but I wanna make sure that we don't violate the open meeting law either. So how do you wanna, the individual council members, what their specific issues were so we can provide feedback to staff? How do you want us to handle that?
Uh, I think you can forward those directly to the city manager.
Okay. And can we put, can I ask everybody, what, within a week?
A few days or so to, to get those to him so that he's not kinda hanging out there and, and knows what we're looking for? How long is Brian out?
He'll be back next week.
He'll be back next week?
On Monday, the thirtieth.
Well, if you got time to jot something down, can you get something into in the next couple of days just so that, uh, we provide some direction to the applicant so he knows what, what we're kinda looking for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then I have one more, uh, comment and, uh, councilmember, uh, Campbell brought it up. We are very excited about the promotion of Chiefs, uh, Chief Paul Luizy to fire chief. We will do the official announcement when Brian gets back next week and have, um, Chief Luizy come up and say some, I'm sure some very profound and, uh, meaningful statements. We'll also work on a, an opportunity to do an official badge pinning ceremony. And that's it.
That's it? Let's see, does council have any inquiries of staff? Uh, next meeting will be a work session on, and a regular meeting on October seventh. Uh, with that, meeting adjourned.